I feel like we would probably be a little bit less sensitive.
I think so.
But the first step in 2020.
This space, yeah, they're similar to this space.
I'll reach with the people. And you know, for instance, the original town has something different.
So sorry.
The new parks.
Yeah, there, okay.
And then down at Rock Creek Village.
My hands can't hold us up from the left.
Yeah, we think it's a pretty positive way that's leading to a new infrastructure. We have to do the economic centers.
Sure.
Did you have a box?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a second, second system.
I don't really know.
Yeah.
That's a process that will generate a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is your, what is your, what is your capital?
I, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I started with your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is your, what is your, what is your capital? Okay.
Given the amount of work that has gone on so far this year with CAPS and town staff related to this, we think that makes sense. And we could see this also fitting with some of the larger projects. So for instance, with the Art Path, you know, we're looking at a five-year project. And it may, you know, different things could come up to delay some of the activities. And it would be a shame to lose some of that budget if that activity wasn't fulfilled within the timeline because of conditions outside the control of the group implementing it. I think you've had a chance to review the budget in a little bit more detail. The things that I think are worth noting are, as I mentioned, that events and programming become flexible in 2021. So the funding is in place, but it can be used for different activities or different types of events. We have the Pop-Up Prairie Dogs, which are carryover. We recommend a new public art piece for 1500 Colton. If the building is going to be public, this is a great opportunity to have it become the first public art piece out of public building in Superior. And with an estimated construction or renovation budget of $2 million, $20,000 equals about 1% of that, which would be in line with something that you can do something quite effective with while still respecting the taxpayers and ensuring that we are fulfilling this in a fiscally responsible way. So in terms of the Art Path, we look at about $15,000 for community or for the planning, and that's a lot of community outreach, starting to map out what this might look like, some of the potential routes, dig deeper on the aesthetics, continuing with the historic final wraps on the bus shelters, some flexible money to start looking at the mobility freedom piece. And then just small amounts for elevating social capital. It's also really important to be able to share what's going on in these plans. So that's where $5,000 for the mailouts come in. And then there are the other practical things such as finishing this master plan and the maintenance. So we have $10,000 next year for moving the marketplace pieces, cleaning them, and also cleaning the bronzes. And then in each year, we included a discretionary budget for CAPS to conduct activities that they think are important, that, you know, we may not have considered early on. And we want to make sure that they have the space to pursue those as well. And so what we've tried to do is create enough of a plan that we're guiding where the activities are going from, where we think the strongest opportunities are and how they can be carried forward, while maintaining enough flexibility that there is possibilities for CAPS, town staff, and the board to adjust this as needed and ensure that, you know, moving forward, this plan is responding to the needs of the residents. We think there's a lot of room for partnership opportunities, that they are vital to the success of this project. These are some of the organizations and groups that we have identified that could be helpful in this regard. There are certainly more. But, you know, everything from schools to the town of Lewisville and the library and looking at what opportunities there are to further enhance library programming or other activities here in Superior. There is the HOA, of course, as well as the private commercial centers, as well as all of the committees that we would be looking to work with to carry forward various aspects of this plan. Now, moving forward, we are having town staff is working away with the CAPS committee on developing some of the policy around selecting arts, the locations for it, and the artists to carry it forward. We've received a draft of this and will work with the town staff and CAPS to refine this and ensure it makes its place into the final plan. And for this, you know, we're looking at art that is publicly funded on public land, art that is funded through major developments on public land, and art that has been agreed to through contractual agreements is too strong word, so I think we said developer commitment agreements here that will fit onto private land, but that has been agreed to with the town board in advance. Now, just actually note here, so on the potential partnerships piece, we see a lot of opportunity to take the funding that is available and use it as seed funding to help carry it further. So, you know, activating the streets through the block parties. This is something that comes with negligible costs, but that by empowering residents to take these celebrations forward, you can start to transform the way people use and understand streets, while also connecting with their neighbors and creating their own events that become popular. I mentioned the Safe Roots to School Colorado grant, that's a really strong one. There's also several from, so the Great Outdoors Colorado Local Park and Outdoor Recreation Grant. That's a pretty substantial one for enhancing the use of your outdoor spaces and public spaces. There's the Gates Family Foundation has a number of grants that may be relevant here, the Colorado Conservation Trust, and even the Community Foundation of Boulder County. So we see a number of ways to use the funding that has been made available to CAPS and town staff to carry forward and actually turn into further funding to help, you know, add even more arts, culture, and public space enhancing activities to the town. And so this is the final slide. On the left, we have a draft table of contents. So this is what we are beginning to fill out. And in the background that you receive, we're following this order to a pretty good degree. And then on the right, we have what's coming up next. So December 7th, upstairs at Sports Stable at Skate with Sanders, I will say the name wrong, but Brunelleschi's? Is that it? Brunelleschi's. So we'll be up at Brunelleschi's. We are meeting tomorrow to talk about what these engagements might look like to help draw people upstairs and give them the opportunity to reflect on what we've created so far. Then in January, we'll present back to CAPS now a draft of the master plan. We'll have time to revise before presenting to you on February 10th and then taking your comments and making the final revisions in time to deliver on time on February 28th. Thank you. That concludes my presentation and look forward to your questions and comments.
All right, thanks, Mitchell. Appreciate the presentation. We have about 30 minutes remaining in our work session. And we have Deanna Millers here with our Cultural Arts and Events Supervisor, and Melinda Tan and Daryl McCool with CAPS. Did you all have any remarks that you wanted to make or just go with Q and A with Mitchell? Okay. All right, very good. Okay, board members.
So first, I just want to say I think this is fantastic work. I'm so excited about so many of the ideas in here. And I think they're really going to help to activate our community. I think you've done a fantastic job hearing what we had to say. I had one very tactical question about the giant-sized photo frames. I noticed in the detailed presentation that the locations for those tended to be more our commerce sites rather than, I would think of them being more like at trailheads or like open space and kind of showcasing the beauty of them. So I understand that it's a draft and there's lots of room to decide where those might go. But what is the intended purpose for those? Is it to, is it to kind of show off Superior? Is it to be in community gathering places?
Sure. Could we turn off the light for one sec? Because I think you're referring to this one.
Yes.
And you're referring to the picture frames?
Yes.
Yeah. So it might be a color thing, but so we have, these are options for choices rather than saying for sure that where it is. But we have the Caslin and is this the 120?
Oh, okay. I was looking at the other deck and I thought it was the red, so now I'm with you. You don't have to answer anymore.
So we have a couple of potential locations here, and this is to be determined.
Sure.
We were expecting it to be one, but we did create a render for what it might look like from that location because capturing the outdoor scenic beauty and, you know, highlighting how that is actually probably the most artistic thing in town is something that we think is important.
Okay, good. So my understanding was correct. Thank you.
All right. Mitchell, thank you for the presentation. It was, you guys put a lot of work into this, obviously, so I'm looking forward to seeing the final product. You know, one of the things that has, and I think we talked about it, you know, when we were doing the interviews a couple of months ago. When it comes to like, you know, public art and placemaking and really trying to put like Superior on the map with this sort of thing. You know, one of the thing that I, one thing that I think sets certain communities apart is having really like an iconic place where, you know, people take pictures and you know you're in, you know, Aspen or Steamboat or San Francisco or Chicago. There's some piece of, you know, public art or a sign, something that is unique, identifiable, and really distinctive. And, you know, I like the, I mean, I like everything that I'm seeing here in terms of, you know, just, you know, finalizing things. I think one thing that would be great would be to have at the forefront, you know, some sort of piece of art that is really identifiable for Superior, right? And obviously, like the Zephyr and Triptich is great, but we don't want people running into the middle of a roundabout and getting hit by a car. So, you know, to the extent that we can think of something that would be accessible, people could either climb on, take photographs around, that would really help kind of create a little identity for Superior, I think would be a welcome addition as well to this project. But I think it's great. I'm glad that we're spending the time. On the art walk, the one question I had on that is just in terms of, and this is another thing that we talked about during the whole interviewing process. We've got 300 days of sunshine a year, the sun's really hot. How does an art walk like that hold up to the elements here? Because we don't want to spend a lot of money putting in something that looks beautiful and then all of a sudden it, you know, fades within a month or two.
Absolutely.
So how exactly would an art walk be executed upon?
That's a good question, so I'll answer that one and then I'll work back to the first one. So the art walk can take many forms. And in the background, we included a number of different options for the types of art that could be included there. The first stage, the planning stage, would help to identify which materials are best suited for the Colorado climate. In an earlier version, for instance, we had banners up on some of the poles. And we heard that the hurricane-force winds that Superior experiences on a somewhat regular basis might tear those off pretty quickly and they wouldn't be the right fit. So in digging deeper and going into this planning process where we look at the specifics of the plan, that would be one of the key things to address. The other piece to that is that we've included a maintenance budget each year for maintaining the pieces that are being created. With the art walk, you know, we could see some sections of it being a surface treatment. And that could be paint, that could be the heated plastic that you use on roads in most cases rather than painting for making traffic markings. And there's also space for sculptures and other live art installations along the edges as well as programming. So there's many different forms that this could take. But being aware of the materials would be one of the big things in digging deeper and actually bringing this plan to fruition. And then to the first question around the iconic art. So we recognize this is really important and getting the balance of ensuring the whole town receives these opportunities, but also having this type of space. We see a number of opportunities for them, and so we've kind of created these clusters to help detail where this might be. But any specific piece of art that is going to do that would go through the selection process that CAPS is working on. So there would be the location selection, there would be the artist selection, and then there would be the art piece selection. And so we're working to develop that process. And then from there is where a specific piece would be determined. And there are a few things that we think are going to really enhance that sense of place in Superior that are outside the scope of this plan. So for instance, with Parks 1 and 2 under development or soon to be under development, we see a lot of opportunity to work in those spaces with an amphitheater and a splash pad. So we've clustered a number of public art pieces around where we think Parks 1 and 2 will be and to help start to create that. And I think it'll be really in the details and working through this process that you'll be able to fulfill that very specific iconic piece that makes you feel like you were in Superior. In addition to the three new signs that are coming in as well for the town.
Mitchell, thanks for coming back down. We appreciate it. I'll echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think what you guys have pulled together looks great at this point. I like the, in taking a look at the long version of the presentation that you guys provided, I like the idea of the high-level quick wins. I think to Mayor Protem Laces's point, there's always that desire to have a big iconic piece. However, I think there's also that branding capability, a way to use smaller features, but that become more ubiquitous throughout town to really make a difference and impact. And looking at the Signal Box wraps and looking at the Bus Shelter wraps, I feel like those are some great opportunities that we can move on within the next couple of years that could really kind of set the tone for what we are. So I appreciate those types of solutions that we're seeing. Beyond that, I would like to, when we see this in final, hear a little bit more information about how often, timing, when it does make sense to actually pull the trigger on those larger, more expensive pieces. We don't want to spend so much money upfront that we can't do some of this stuff, but at the same time, they hold value. So seeing a bit more of the strategy that comes with that is helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. I think the quick wins are a really helpful way to just demonstrate, you know, things are happening and they're happening now. And I think that action is going to be really important to get the community interest and buy-in for the Art Path as well as this plan as a whole, as it will go much further if the entire community or large portions of it are engaged in what we're carrying forward. And then in terms of the larger pieces, we've put in budget items to help fund these. So I believe Connect Art, we've allocated $50,000 in 2023 to carry that forward. And then, so in addition to the discretionary fund that CAPS will have each year and varies year by year, there's also the art installation or exhibition in parks that's an annual fund. And that can be used, that has some somewhat discretionary value as well. So there is opportunity to combine those to create this iconic piece. We'll work forward to helping determine when that is the best fit, though, and so we have a little bit more clarity on that moving ahead.
And I'm glad you brought the funding piece back up as well. There's always competition for dollars within our budget. And while the value is clear here, I think there's also a desire to be able to fund more than what we can even pay for with our typical $150,000 we currently have in the budget. Other municipalities that you've worked for, can you talk about the success rates with the grants that they've applied for with the organizations that you mentioned?
Well, I mean, we work internationally quite a bit. So here in Colorado, I've never worked with a municipality for these funds.
Yeah, I know some of them are national organizations.
Yeah. But I can say that in Vancouver, this is an approach that we've used quite a lot. We tend to have, I would say, I mean, it varies by fund, but say the community grants, those are, say, 80 to 100% these small grants. If we look at some of the bigger ones, the success rate is going to be between 5 and 20%. And some of these bigger ones also have multi-stage pieces for them to be achieved. So you have the lower threshold of entry. And then, you know, if they think this is going in the right direction, they can then carry it forward. But that's also a good question and one that we can dig into further for the final report.
I appreciate that.
And I would note that, I mean, we work with all sorts of different communities in Canada, the US, and around the world. And often, we're working with communities that don't have the same economic power to back their projects. And so we're always looking for the small ways to help leverage that. And we're doing the same thing here with these grants, with the ways that we can get community involved to help carry these projects forward. So that's something we'll be pushing in the final plan as well.
Thanks. Okay, others? All right. Any closing remarks from, we typically don't do public comment, but we can certainly do public comment if anyone would like to comment on this item or have any closing remarks? Okay. Thank you very much, Mitchell. Appreciate it, and we look forward to next steps.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you at Brunelleschi's on the 7th.
Yes.
In your ugly sweater.
In the ugly sweaters.
So we have about 20 minutes till the regular meeting, which we can't start early. But I did have a thought that we could, since we've moved announcements to the end, we could, if the board was okay with that and you were okay with that, do you see any issue of doing board announcements? Okay, would the board like to do announcements now instead of 20 minutes of awkward silence here? Okay. All right, let's do that.
Announcements meaning reports, right?
Reports, yes.
I'm happy to go then.
Reports, questions, and issues.
Just double checking before I start.
That's it.
Something I'm not supposed to.
Yes.
All right, so I know it's been a little bit of time since we last met. And so I was looking back in First Friday I haven't talked about, because it's been a couple of weeks. So First Friday in November, we talked about RTD Airport Noise, Sales Tax, the Zaharias Development, 1500 Colton Road, 88 Street Improvements, Powerline Undergrounding, Rocky Mountain Fire, and Town Center Development. Happy to chat with any of you more later on what specifically we talked about, but that's a high level. Last week, I attended the Superior Historical Commission and have a question for my fellow board members here. As you all know, the Historic Commission is putting historic photos up at the Sports Stable, and they have different businesses and individuals in the community that are sponsoring those photos. I had the idea, I thought it might be nice for maybe our full board or some people on our board to sponsor a photo from all of us that would go up there. So that's something I won't necessarily ask for input on now, but I'll send an email and see if anybody wants to join me in doing that. I think it'd be a neat way to kind of just memorialize our time on the board and have that up there as well as get another cool photo up there for people to enjoy. And finally, last week, I attended the Lewisville Library Meeting on behalf of Neil. Great meeting, Neil. I owe you some notes from that, which I will send through later tonight.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. Ken?
It's been a busy couple of days. This past Thursday, the 14th, I attended an ACE's meeting. Lots of good discussion topics during that meeting. One of the discussion topics was reviewing the Downtown Commercial Core FDP that we'll be discussing later tonight because the four packet who already have been issued, their recommendation will not be included in tonight's conversation, but it will be included for our next meeting. On Friday, the 15th, I attended the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner along with many of you. I'll highlight that one of the stats that staff compiled was that there were 437 people who volunteered, 2,913 hours of service this past year, accumulating in more than $74,000 of cost savings to the town. So very impactful for a town of our size. So a big thank you to all the volunteers who stepped up for our community. And I'll give a plug that anybody who is interested in watching at home tonight to reach out to our Community Relations Manager, Kevin Cologne, to discuss volunteer opportunities that might be right for you. This morning, I attended a Rocky Flat Stewardship Council meeting and was our primary representative on behalf of Mayor Protem Laces. Of note, Jennifer Opelia from the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, she's the Director of Hazardous Material and Waste Management Division, attended and presented to the group. There was not a lot of new information that hadn't already been discussed in the email that was published a few weeks ago. But to summarize, the CDPHE will be creating a map of soil sampling results that they look to distribute. They'll be performing an assessment of the potential radiation dose from plutonium for a construction worker and a resident in nearby communities. So they'll be running multiple scenario analysis. They are working with the Colorado State University to conduct data validation. And they will be reviewing scientific literature to compare exposure risks with what was found to a homogeneous concentration. And they're hoping to have all of these goals finalized and reported out to the community by April of 2020. And then just before this meeting, Trustee Ryan and Town Manager Magley and I met with Rocky Mountain Fire for our joint committee meeting. And Rocky Mountain Fire notified us that the consultant report that was being conducted to evaluate the merger opportunity between them and Mountain View as well as the fire authority creation that includes Lafayette has finished. There were no, quote, "showstoppers" that were identified in that report. Mountain View will be considering a motion tonight to set a July 1st, 2020 merger date. And Rocky Mountain Fire will be discussing the same motion at their December 9th meeting. Assuming that that does go through, our mills for 2020 will stay the same. But going into 2021, our mills for fire services will drop by roughly three. We will keep you informed as we move forward, but Rocky Mountain Fire is hopeful that things will progress positively.
One clarification is, are they creating a new district or is one swallowing the other?
Mountain View would in essence be swallowing Rocky Mountain, which is why Rocky Mountain and the group is moving forward with the assumption that it would not have to go to voters. That because our mills would be dropping, nobody's mills are going up, it won't require an act by the voters. However, they will still be going out and doing public outreach, which they plan to start in the new calendar year.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks. Just to supplement a couple of things that Ken commented on. First, there's a feasibility study if anybody's really interested. We have a couple of copies. You could reach out to Town Hall or there are some copies right there if anybody is interested. And second, there's no expectation for a change in the service level. So the mills will go down, Station 5 will still exist. And the expectation is that would exist, and the expectation is there would be no change to the service level. So just to level set there. It's been a while for the rest of us. It's been longer for me. Apologies that I missed a meeting a few weeks ago for business travel, but I appreciate my colleagues participating. I did watch, it's a 90% of the meeting. I didn't quite make it all the way through, but I did watch a lot of it, so really well done. Maybe I should skip more meetings. Kidding. And really just want to give a shout out to CAPS, the Cultural Arts and Public Spaces Committee. They've just done a tremendous amount of work. And the fact that we have this master plan, even though it's really in draft format, it's really already proven to be such a useful tool. We have so many great ideas that come to the town. And it's helpful to use, to compare some of those ideas into this kind of anchoring document and see if it's consistent with some of the feedback we've heard, not just from CAPS, not from the board, not from a few residents, but frankly, through the entire community engagement process. So really just could not be any happier. There was a slide early in the presentation about the process, and we're really just starting that refinement process. So this work product that you see here today is really a fantastic work product, but it still is a work in progress. And so if you have thoughts that you might not have considered tonight or members of the community have additional thoughts, we are certainly welcome. And again, there is that feedback session on December 7th. Yes? At Brunelleschi's. So that's really it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Mark?
Good evening. Just one thing to report. I received an email and then had a call with Joe Nogus's legislative aide. And what the congressman is working on right now is trying to find solutions or at least some solutions for the town with respect to Rocky Mountain Airport. What is on the congressman's agenda right now is introducing a bill probably with Representative Pearl Mutter that would allow generally aviation airports like Rocky Mountain Metro to impose a curfew on air travel. So the flight schools wouldn't be able to necessarily operate in the middle of the night if the airport elected to impose, which is obviously the next step in the process. But right now, you know, one of the things that we've heard from the airport is, well, even if we wanted to curtail traffic at night, we don't have the power to because we need to keep it open 24/7 for all, any and all air traffic that's going in and out of the airport. So right now, the proposal would be to give additional powers through the FAA to the airports. So if they were interested in actually imposing one of those types of curfews, they would at least have that power. So that's on the congressman's radar. His legislative aide said that the invitation is open to any of the board members if they want to talk to the congressman's staff about want to talk to the congressman's staff about this proposal, about any other good ideas. So I'll, I'll send over the contact information if anybody's interested in reaching out. But it's good that we have, you know, an advocate in Washington looking out for the town. So that's it.
Thanks, Mark. Neil?
Thank you. On October thirtieth, I attended the Pickin Traffic Commuing Meeting here at Town Hall with Sandy. As in the past, it's been really impressive to watch Carlos and Alex take the community through the data and the potential options. The TSC, excuse me, the TSC will be reviewing the recommendations on December second and I'm optimistic that we can get to a solution that works. The neighborhood's been waiting a long time for permanent measures and I hope we can get it done. I actually want to personally recognize Carlos Hernandez for the great work he's done on the TSC for this year. Unfortunately, Boulder has hired him away as their new Mobility and Transportation Director, so Superior will be losing his services going forward. That's it for my updates. Thanks.
Thanks, Neil and Sandy.
Good evening, everyone. I attended the Denver Regional Council of Governments Work Session on November sixth. No action is generally taken at those meetings, but we're just updated on things of interest. The fortunate thing that I did have the opportunity to do during that evening was to travel down with Mayor-elect at that time, Ashley Stolzmann of Lewisville, and I just want to extend congratulations to her and to all of the new council members in Lewisville. We continue to work closely with Lewisville on lots of projects and it'll be interesting to work with their new council. I attended the OSEC meeting on November thirteenth. Most of the meeting was focused on discussion of their 2020 work plan, but I was saddened to hear during that meeting, and I think the board's been made aware of it, of the resignation of Peter Ruprecht from OSEC. Peter and Vanessa Vollen were pretty much the driving force on the success we've had thus far on the Raptor program and OSEC and I are concerned about with the loss of these two great volunteers, what will happen to our program. So this is sort of a challenge to the residents of Superior who have been involved with that. We really do need someone to take some leadership on that going forward. I think most people who are aware that we are, we have a lot of Raptors in this town and we want to do all we can to not have people going and checking them out, but being appreciative of the species we have in town. I had a report from one of our residents who attended the last Advisory Committee meeting of Rocky Mountain Airport. And while this is obviously second-hand information, the sense I got from that report was that Jefferson County might be taking a bit stronger role in the Advisory Committee and while I'm not sure that I would say it's good news, it sounds like there's a step in the right direct, direction that Jefferson County's taking a larger role. My sense was that some of the folks who were on the committee were a little discouraged by the things they heard from the representatives of Jefferson County as far as Jefferson County wanting to take a bigger role in what's going on up there. So that was an interesting comment to have from one of our residents that something actually happened, that they, they found the meeting to be, to be more items of value being discussed and much more in-depth. So it also sounds like Jefferson County is supportive of the roundtable concept and they will be pushing to explore that more. The final thing I wanted to report on was I attended the Town of Superior's Volunteer Recognition Event on Friday night. Super, super well-done by our town staff. It was just, you know, first of all, I want to recommend Kevin Cullen. That guy can speak on his feet like nobody's business. He really, really has a talent and did a great job of recognizing our volunteers and talking about our programs and, and how important volunteers are to our community. I was a little disappointed that we didn't have more of our volunteers there. We had a good crowd, but I know we have a lot more folks involved in the town and I certainly hope that our volunteers know that they're appreciated even though they could not come to that event. So congratulations, Matt, that was a great event and please extend my thank you to your staff again for it. And that would be all.
Thanks, Sandy. And last Friday, I also attended the volunteer appreciation dinner and I'll echo Sandy's comments. It was very well done and very much appreciate the efforts of all of our volunteers throughout the year. Also attended on that same day at the Colorado Municipal League, the Annual Mayor's Summit. It's a gathering of mayors from around the state to discuss issues and kind of provide some guidance and training on various issues. So it was a well-done seminar and enjoyed the participation with my colleagues from around the state. That is all for my announcements. And Kendra, we're doing announcements because we had a little extra time in the work sessions. We've moved to the end of the meeting, but we thought we'd just do it now since we had some time, so.
That's a great idea.
Yes, Matt.
Nothing to report.
And Kendra?
Nothing to report.
Okay, and Phyllis? All right, very good.
Mayor, I did have one more thing.
Okay.
I, I did have the opportunity to go and utilize our brand-new trailhead, the Ormond Roach Trailhead, and it is just phenomenally beautiful at that spot. It's a great perch. I think it's got one of the top, top two or three views in Superior. So I definitely suggest anybody and everybody to go out and use it when you get a chance. It's, it's great and the amount of parking up there is just fantastic. Well done.
Good, thanks for that. All right, we'll adjourn our work session and be back in about five minutes.